Thank you very much. Okay, it's nine o'clock. We'll call the meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We'll also be meeting at 9:15 as Lincoln County Board of Equalization. Both meetings following the Open Meetings Act is amended and posted at the entry of the room. Our first order of business is to open with prayer. Christopher Brunz, Commissioner, please.
Join me if you would. Heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you with open hearts and open minds. We ask for your guidance today as we discuss the important business of Lincoln County and work to make decisions that are in the best interests of those that we serve, and more importantly, that are pleasing in your eye. Give us a touch of your wisdom and your discernment to do such. Lord, we lift up our emergency personnel, our first responders, our law enforcement, and particularly those working in our power districts, working to repair the damage from last night's events. Lord, keep them safe, allow them to work, and get the job done quickly and in a manner that is safe and supports the work of our community. Lord, we also lift up our military personnel, both here, stateside, and abroad, that work to protect our many freedoms that we enjoy. We pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chris. Entertained a motion to approve the minutes of the Commissioners' Meeting held May 28, 2024?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion we approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Commissioners' Meeting held on May 28, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Tammy.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Next item, approving the claims and treasurers receipts. I think we had those in our package. Any-- would I entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the claims and treasurers receipts as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I see we have a revenue from Adams County, which means that their jail is not up and running yet. They did have a ribbon cutting a couple of months ago, so they may be soon to open up, but not yet.
It's that situation, isn't it?
Yes, it is. A lot of expense involved in that, and for their benefit, I hope they get that up and going.
Yep. Any other comments? Roll call.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Next item is reappointment of Kevin Ty, Michael Steele, and LeAnn Ellis to the Nebraska International Port of the Plains Board. I did have a chance to sit down with Vince Dugan, the chairman, and the vice chairman, Mr. Keenan, and probably two, three weeks ago, over the individuals for reappointment. It was the feeling of those two individuals that the board is working very well together now. They're just now starting to get some cohesiveness, understand the process, and that they feel it would be very important in their mind to keep those individuals on and continue through this first series so they can keep that momentum kind of going forward, and if, you know, if it's not broken, don't fix it. So having said that, I think it calls for the board chair of the Commissioners to make the nomination. So at this time, I'm going to nominate Kevin Ty, Michael Steele, and LeAnn Ellis for reappointments to their terms on the Nebraska International Port of--
Three-year term.
Those are four--
For a three-year term.
Four-year.
Four-year.
For a four-year term. That's the reason I didn't say, because I didn't know what-- For a four-year term on the Nebraska International Port of the Plains Board. That would be my motion.
I would second that.
Discussion, questions?
I just-- I would point out, in addition, in absolute agreement with your comments, Mr. Chairman, I've had the pleasure to watch this board work together since its inception, and all three of these individuals provide valuable contribution as far as discussion and the thought process for the decisions that it made thus far. And I look forward to seeing how this board continues to progress and really makes this opportunity a great success.
The comments. Tammy, roll call vote, please.
Hugley.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Next item is to authorize the chairman to sign the dental renewal for the 2024-2025 year with Emeritus. Would you entertain a motion for that?
Chairman, I'd move to authorize your signature on the dental renewal form for the 2024-2025 term with Emeritus.
Second.
A motion and a second. Are there any questions, any discussion that we would like to have this time?
So, Mr. Chairman, we had this tabled from a couple of weeks ago. We had an opportunity as the Benefits Committee to sit down and discuss, and we had a representative come in, and they-- Emeritus will be working diligently to try to expand the provider network here in Lincoln County for our employees. They also did provide us some different quotes, and although we took a slight rate increase, it was far less than what we would get with any other carrier. But we did explain to them, you know, that the driving factor for tabling the decision was when we first decided to go with this group several years ago, that it was because there was discussion that was had, not only with the 90th UNC coverage that was provided for Adam Network, but also a promise to us to really work to expand providers that were in-network. And so we relayed that that really hasn't happened, although the 90th UNC is a very rich benefit. Most other companies only have 50 UNC. We'd still like to see additional providers brought into network, and they made a new commitment to work to get that done. So I support this.
Tammy, roll call vote.
Williams.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Next item, authorize the chairman to sign the right-of-way application submitted by Beverage Well Drilling. There is a check included in the amount of $301.98. It's out on Toby property, is that-- Welcome, sir. Would you--
Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent.
Morning, Jason.
Morning, sir.
Good morning.
I have a feeling Jason's going to highlight a concern that I have with this particular permit, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, so it has come to light that this permit was submitted, and the applicant actually had put Beverage Well Drilling as the--
Company name.
The company name, which they are the ones performing the work, but they are not the permit holder. It is actually the landowner that should be, so it's-- we need to change that on the paperwork. So I don't know if that's something we can simply change at this moment, or if we need to get new signatures and resubmit, so.
Where the applicant was the one that wrote it, I think that probably be prudent, but I would way want the legal counsel to lay in that we would just need a new application submitted.
I mean, it's our permit, so it's really a matter, I guess, of course, comfort level with having the right names on it. Ultimately, yes, obviously, for that, we would--
Since we have a representative here, is it such thing that we can just cross out, sign it, and issue it?
If the board's comfortable with that, I don't see a reason we can't pick something away. I don't-- I mean, the underlying information's not going to change, other than whom it's being issued to.
I would also point out that on the front page, it does have the correct company name written. It's the signature page where it is incorrect.
And who wrote the check?
Dallas Toby.
The applicant, yeah.
So there's just one place that we would just need to write in the other name if that's the case.
And the application is also signed by the applicant, Dallas Toby. It's just one place where it says Beverage Well Drilling.
So my only question is, is where this was published on an official agenda with one entity, and we changed that. Are there any legal ramifications from that?
Obviously, no, simply because it came in front of the board as an application submitted by Beverage. You have a representative from Beverage. The board has now decided that they would like this other signature changed to reflect the rest of the actual application. So I think on that front, we're probably okay.
Would it be appropriate to ask Mr. Jones to come up and speak to that?
Brandon, you want to come on up, please? Just introduce yourself and sign in, please.
Brandon Jones of Beverage Well Drilling Incorporated. The reason we brought this to attention is we were not the applicant, and we wanted to make sure everyone was well aware of that. Due to the language in the permit, we just wanted to make sure that we weren't the responsible party. Yes, we are the contractor who's doing strictly installing condo, but we will not own or operate this facility.
Okay, I think it's going to be the ruling of this chair unless legal counsel says different, that we're going to strike as a company name in one place, Beverage Well Drilling. Okay? That's on the last page, but that's the appropriate way to do it. Everywhere else calls out that it's made by Dallas Toby and authorized. Representative was signed by Dallas Toby in the signature line itself. So that would, I think, seems to be serve the interest of the public and everybody involved, the contractor, the owner, and this board. Unless there's a reason not, that's the way I would like to--
We could have a motion without effect. I think that would be appropriate.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we authorize you to sign the right-of-way application submitted by Beverage Well Drilling, and it should be changed to Dallas Toby Farms on the company name.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
Brandon, are you comfortable with that?
As long as our name's removed from the application, yes, I have no concerns with that. That's just my biggest concern. Like I said, ongoing liability for the facility is not what we want to, you know, take on, so.
Very good. Thank you for clarifying that.
So all we're going to do effectively is strike by interlineation of reference to Beverage and then reinsert, again, by interlineation, Dallas Toby Farms, whatever the actual entity is. Mr. Toby.
Other discussion or comments? Roll call vote.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Next item is to authorize the chairman to sign pay application number nine for the Sutherland North Bridge Project.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we authorize your signature to, or any other appropriate signature on the pay application number nine for the Sutherland North River Bridge Project.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Jason, this work that we're approving here is in relation to what part of the project?
The deck pore. So this is a lot of the steel and the concrete for the deck pore that was completed over there.
Concrete is going on?
Yep. Yeah, they completed the deck pore, and they're working on the--
Approaches.
On the walls and the approaches and everything. So, yeah, they're moving right along, coming along very nicely.
Wow.
Yep.
They parked on the deck two days ago.
Yep.
Yep, I did.
Yep.
That is amazing.
Yep.
Yes. Looking right along. The weather has been very conducive to the progress, and the fact that we have a wonderful partner in the construction company doing the project, they are highly motivated.
Yes, they are.
And doing a great job.
It's quality work, too.
Quality work, yes.
Any other comments? So we do have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Brunz.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Thank you.
It's 9:17. We will recess as Lincoln County Board of Commissioners convenes as Lincoln County Board of Equalization. Again, following the Open Meetings Act is amended and a copy of which is posted at the entry of the room. First order of business is to approve the minutes of the Lincoln County Board of Equalization Meeting held on May 28, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Equalization Meeting held on May 28, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. Roll call, please.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Next item, standing on the first one, too, but I'm abstaining on the second one. Certificates of Correction and Repunishment submitted by the county assessor, I see none. Okay? That's one way to get back on schedule. We will, no other business, Becky Wright comes before the Board of Equalization. We will adjourn as the Board of Equalization at 9:18 and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners.
Small claim file.
Yeah.
It was late last week, too. Look at this. Ooh, that helps out even better.
Eventually, it will catch up. I'm a realist.
It can ease into that.
Some members of your family will be setting a pivot up right sometime soon.
Yeah, I'm one of the seven towers, I think.
Uh-huh. First and last one, I think, are still up the rest of the valley.
There's always--
There's always the positives.
Way to find that silver lining.
That kind of lines up with that twister you showed on video at this weigh station.
Yep, it's about exactly directly south of that.
Some doctoral work on your journalism degree?
No.
Looks like you're about through it, whatever it is.
Yeah, I told myself I couldn't buy any more books until I finished this series.
Good for you. Don't let me interrupt you. Looked like you were getting into it there.
It's a good book. I just need to get it done so I can buy--
Buy more books.
[laughing]
Next item, authorizing the chairman to sign pay application number nine for the Sutherland North Bridge Project.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we authorize your signature to, or any other appropriate signature on the pay application number nine for the Sutherland North River Bridge Project.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Jason, this work that we're approving here is in relation to what part of the project?
The deck pore. So this is a lot of the steel and the concrete for the deck pore that was completed over there.
Concrete is going on?
Yep. Yeah, they completed the deck pore, and they're working on the--
Approaches.
On the walls and the approaches and everything. So, yeah, they're moving right along, coming along very nicely.
Wow.
Yep.
They parked on the deck two days ago.
Yep.
Yep, I did.
Yep.
That is amazing.
Yep.
Yes. Looking right along. The weather has been very conducive to the progress, and the fact that we have a wonderful partner in the construction company doing the project, they are highly motivated.
Yes, they are.
And doing a great job.
It's quality work, too.
Quality work, yes.
Any other comments? So we do have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Brunz.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is to authorize the chairman to sign pay application number nine for the Sutherland North Bridge Project.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we authorize your signature to, or any other appropriate signature on the pay application number nine for the Sutherland North River Bridge Project.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Jason, this work that we're approving here is in relation to what part of the project?
The deck pore. So this is a lot of the steel and the concrete for the deck pore that was completed over there.
Concrete is going on?
Yep. Yeah, they completed the deck pore, and they're working on the--
Approaches.
On the walls and the approaches and everything. So, yeah, they're moving right along, coming along very nicely.
Wow.
Yep.
They parked on the deck two days ago.
Yep.
Yep, I did.
Yep.
That is amazing.
Yep.
Yes. Looking right along. The weather has been very conducive to the progress, and the fact that we have a wonderful partner in the construction company doing the project, they are highly motivated.
Yes, they are.
And doing a great job.
It's quality work, too.
Quality work, yes.
Any other comments? So we do have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Brunz.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Thank you.
It's 9:17. We will recess as Lincoln County Board of Commissioners convenes as Lincoln County Board of Equalization. Again, following the Open Meetings Act is amended and a copy of which is posted at the entry of the room. First order of business is to approve the minutes of the Lincoln County Board of Equalization Meeting held on May 28, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Equalization Meeting held on May 28, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. Roll call, please.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Next item, approving the claims and treasurers receipts. I think we had those in our package. Any-- would I entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the claims and treasurers receipts as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we authorize your signature to, or any other appropriate signature on the pay application number nine for the Sutherland North River Bridge Project.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Jason, this work that we're approving here is in relation to what part of the project?
The deck pore. So this is a lot of the steel and the concrete for the deck pore that was completed over there.
Concrete is going on?
Yep. Yeah, they completed the deck pore, and they're working on the--
Approaches.
On the walls and the approaches and everything. So, yeah, they're moving right along, coming along very nicely.
Wow.
Yep.
They parked on the deck two days ago.
Yep.
Yep, I did.
Yep.
That is amazing.
Yep.
Yes. Looking right along. The weather has been very conducive to the progress, and the fact that we have a wonderful partner in the construction company doing the project, they are highly motivated.
Yes, they are.
And doing a great job.
It's quality work, too.
Quality work, yes.
Any other comments? So we do have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Brunz.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Next item, approving the claims and treasurers receipts. I think we had those in our package. Any-- would I entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the claims and treasurers receipts as presented. Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. Roll call, please.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Hugley.
First, you abstained on the first one, too, but I'm abstaining on the second one. And certificates of correction and refund submitted by the county assessor, I see none. Okay? That's one way to get back on schedule. We will, no other business, Becky Wright comes before the Board of Equalization. We will adjourn as the Board of Equalization at 9:18 and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners.
Small claim file.
Yeah.
It was late last week, too. Look at this. Ooh, that helps out even better.
These are my favorites. Eventually, it will catch up. I'm a realist.
It can ease into that. Judy.
How's it going?
I'm glad, how are you?
Some members of your family will be setting a pivot up right sometime soon.
Yeah, I'm one of the seven towers, I think.
Uh-huh. First and last one, I think, are still up the rest of the valley.
There's always--
There's always the positives.
Way to find that silver lining.
That kind of lines up with that twister you showed on video at this weigh station.
Yep, it's about exactly directly south of that.
Yeah.
[inaudible]
Last year.
Every year when the cotton looks drop, I cough.
Some doctoral work on your journalism degree?
No.
Looks like you're about through it, whatever it is.
Yeah, I told myself I couldn't buy any more books until I finished this series.
Good for you. Don't let me interrupt you. Looked like you were getting into it there.
It's a good book. I just need to get it done so I can buy--
Buy more books.
[laughing]
Last year.
Every year when the cotton looks drop, I cough.
Some doctoral work on your journalism degree?
No.
Looks like you're about through it, whatever it is.
Yeah, I told myself I couldn't buy any more books until I finished this series.
Good for you. Don't let me interrupt you. Looked like you were getting into it there.
It's a good book. I just need to get it done so I can buy--
Buy more books.
[laughing]
Last year.
Every year when the cotton looks drop, I cough.
Some doctoral work on your journalism degree?
No.[1644.82]
Or a sheriff. Morning.
I'm glad they gave us our credit, though.
Yeah. That doesn't happen very often. That's bad. Pay that thirty-two thousand dollar review. I think we can just yell out the window and call it itself. Thirty-two grand.
I'm sure there's times where that's a good investment.
It's nine thirty. The next agenda item is to discuss, consider an application by Mike or Mark in Kimberly, France and Fort France Administrative Subdivision located at thirty-eight six oh one East Highway thirty in an A-one agricultural district on property described as part of the north half of the southeast quarter of Section twenty, Township twelve north range twenty-six west to the sixth PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska. Good morning, Mrs. Clark.
How's it going today? Judy Clark, Lincoln County Planning Administrator. You should have all received a copy of the review comments and attached to that as a preliminary and final subdivision plat and then two location maps to give you kind of a good idea of where this is. The subdivision is proposing to split an eight point four four acre existing home site from a two hundred and sixty-eight point two eight acre property. Planning staff has no objection to the subdivision. The subdivision is in conformance with the Lincoln County Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Regulations. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
This is just east of Brady a few miles, right?
That is correct. Right along Highway thirty.
Right on thirty.
Is this for the addition of a home on the property?
Not to my knowledge. They're just subdividing off the existing home site from the remaining aground.
From the remaining, okay. Makes sense.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the application submitted by Mark and Kimberly Franzen for Franzen Administrative Subdivision located at thirty-eight six oh one East Highway thirty in an A-one agricultural district on property described as part of the north half of the northeast quarter of Section twenty, Township twelve north range twenty-six west to the sixth prime meridian, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Second. Motion and second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please, Kevin.
Brens.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Wulver.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hubley. All right, thanks. Thanks, Judy. Yep.
It is nine thirty-five. Next item is to discuss, consider the North Brady Road Asphalt Emergency Repair Project.
Morning, Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent.
Brian Glass.
Lincoln County Deputy Superintendent.
Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
I should have some pictures here.
Yeah, I saw him. I saw him riding a road.
Yeah, so this, we had received a complaint or two on this road and after going up there and taking a look at it and investigating it a little bit further, it looks like we just have a section of road up there that is deteriorating pretty rapidly and it's right around a couple of curves, too. So we feel it does create a pretty dangerous condition, something we need to get addressed and do something with right away. So our, we debated on this, I guess, back and forth a little bit as far as trying to do a temporary versus a more of a permanent fix, but we felt that just doing a more permanent fix would be something that would be the most cost-effective, just considering this road's gonna be on our plan here in the very near future to be redone anyway. So this segment is about a mile long of what needs to be fixed. So we figured up the prices and got some estimates, tried to solicit some pricing from contractors. We only had one that was willing to turn in a price for it.
There you go.
And we had solicited two other ones, Western Engineering as well as Stone Paving as well. So we had it broke down between the materials and then the, we had them pricing just the labor, trucking and equipment, just so it was open to more people to be able to price it in hopes to get some more pricing on it. But the pricing does fall in line with pretty much everything we've been paying up to this point. And total cost, you can see down on the bottom of the one sheet. I think you guys have copies of all these, right?
Yes.
So it's a little over two hundred thousand, two hundred and six thousand is our estimate as of right now. And I did consult also with TC Engineering as far as methods of how to fix this and he agreed with doing the mill and the overlay. So it's very similar to all the repair projects we're doing on the other roads currently. So.
Jason, the one and a half inch milling, will that get down to solid base on?
Yes.
Or will it get through the base?
What's that?
Will it get down to it or will it get through it? Because delamination doesn't just happen, it happens over time, you know, so.
Yeah, no, it'll get down to the good solid roadway underneath, so it'll take care of all the.
How thick is that right there, do we know?
We did not do any depth cores or anything on that section of road.
So we really don't know. It might in fact get through it. I mean, that's my point, if we haven't cored it.
It might get through the?
If we don't know how much road's there, we can't say that the inch and a half milling will take care of it because the inch and a half milling might leave us a half inch asphalt.
Well.
That was my point. That's all I was trying to say.
I don't think that'd be the case, Joe, because in these, as you can see in the pictures, a lot of places there's been an inch or more material that's already popped out and removed and they're still pretty good. The road's holding up just fine. There's good sound asphalt underneath in those spots, so the inch and a half milling would be just to simply finish the job of what's delaminating here and create a good surface to bond to for the overlay.
Was there a reason, Jason, that this wasn't put on our other road work with it? We just bid.
At the time we did evaluations, it was not in this condition and did not, was not the highest priority at the time.
This, this road definitely has to be on the top of the list for next year overlay, in my view. It's, it's, it's been in rough shape, but I guess I, maybe I should have questioned more about it this year in the one and six, but I would, I would say all the way from the village to Antelope, it's, it needs a lot of attention. But I, you know, this is a good start. We better, to the chairman's point, and he's much more versed in this than I, but I would want to do it right. If we can fund this, I want to do it right so we don't have to come back next year and say, well, guys, we gotta fix our Band-Aid.
Well, and that's kind of what we weighed in our decision, too, is looking at doing some sort of a temporary patch over the top of it to get it to hold when we know we're gonna be in here pretty soon to redo this road. But if we do this repair as presented, then that's one less mile that's gonna be repaired just the exact same way that we do the entire project. So that'd be one more mile we wouldn't have to do there.
Yeah. Well, I view it as, as we did five years ago, that we were playing catch-up on a lot of these roads and we all had to wait our turn to budget these things in, and I think this is definitely at the top of my list now. This needs to really, we need to start somewhere and it's, you're right, that's, that thing's coming apart.
Jason, whereabouts, how much road needs to be done in total? Not this patch, the road itself?
Ooh, in, on, on North Brady, probably.
How long is that road?
Is it twelve miles?
Yeah.
So the road needs to.
Yeah, yeah.
It does.
And it's been on our six-year road plan for at least one year.
Particularly to Antelope, it's probably worse than on the north, but it, it needs it.
And it did get a lot worse in a short amount of time and, and the spring, all of our north roads really took a beating. I don't know how many gallons of water went up there, but it was a lot and some of the equipment was.
There's, there's a lot of commerce on that road, a lot of pivots up there.
Lot of regular stuff as well.
Catalent, more of those go up, too. They're served at the Garfield tables, so it does take a lot of traffic.
A lot of irregular activity up there as well.
My concern is that we're gonna have somebody trying to avoid these patches and so they're gonna be driving on the other side of the road on these curves, or they're gonna hit these patches and it's gonna bounce them into the opposite lane into oncoming traffic and we're gonna end up having loss of life, so.
That's our concern as well. That's why we're here presenting this, because it's something we feel we, for the safety of everybody, we need to do something with it.
If this, if this is approved, how soon could the repair begin?
The contractor stated they would be able to probably start in about two weeks, if not sooner. They could, they could work it into their schedule, though, so.
I think that fits the emergency.
We got signage out there?
Yes, we do.
Jason, we, we all know it's road repair season right now, so I'm sure soliciting bids was a challenge to get any responses. Shellco does a great job of responding to our needs when they arise.
Yep, he did.
Tyler, how does this fit in with our bidding requirements in this purchasing act?
Oh, it doesn't, not even a little bit.
Okay.
That's why it has, that's why the board has to find that it is an emergency, and I'm gonna quote from the statute here, which threatens serious loss of life, health or property in the county, and that the waiver of the bidding requirements are necessary to address that urgency.
Very good.
So whoever makes a motion, some language like that would be good.
Mr. Chairman? I'll make a motion that we approve the North Brady Road Asphalt Emergency Repair Project since there is imminent danger, potential danger to traffic in that area because of the condition of the road and on the curves, and this does meet the requirement. We will call this an emergency because of those factors which precludes some of the requirements for the bidding process.
I'll second that. Further comment to your point, Jerry, that I did drive this a few days ago and it is, it is a safety issue. This road is degrading quickly, very quickly. It's gonna be accelerated if we don't address this, and those curves are, that's the dangerous issue.
Yeah, as Commissioner Burns mentioned, that's.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
People wanting to avoid those areas, create extra hazard. Other comments? Thank you for jumping onto this quickly, gentlemen. Roll call vote, Kevin.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Wulver.
Aye.
Brens.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Jason, Brian.
Thank you.
Would we have any representative from the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office that would want to step forward?
You would.
Morning, lady and gentleman.
Good morning. Sheriff Kramer and Lieutenant Ball.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning, Sheriff.
You guys had a considerable amount of reading material after last week's meeting to wade through.
And that's the thing, what we finally did was we, we just picked out the step that we would typically be in, which was the one thirty to one thirty-nine numbers, population. And because to compare them all at every step was getting confusing. So we did it at one thirty to one thirty-nine and then this morning we did two hundred to two twenty-nine and came up with the same results. Trinity Food Service came in significantly lower. They're, based on a hundred and fifty thousand meals a year, which is typically about where we're at, it's eighty-seven thousand dollars cheaper than consolidated, ninety-six thousand dollars cheaper than Summit, and ninety-one thousand five hundred dollars cheaper than Turnkey.
Wow.
And if you drop back to that one twenty to one twenty-nine population, the numbers are slightly different, but Trinity is extremely less. So once we made that conclusion, then the concern is, are they gonna meet the requirements? So then we started picking their book apart a little bit, their proposal. I had never heard of them, so I thought maybe they were a small company trying to get their, their feet on the ground, but that was absolutely wrong. They have three hundred and eighty locations in the United States. They have twenty-seven hundred employees and they serve seventy-five hundred, no, they have seventy-five hundred inmate workers. They serve over two million meals a year. So they're not exactly the little guy in town. You know, some other things, just some little things they offer, like inmate workers, if they're there alone. if they're there long enough, they can give them a, um, certificate for culinary license, which, as you know, we try to get our inmates, uh, a good foundation to maybe get a job when they, when they leave our facility. So I was impressed with that. Their, uh, their meals, the, um, they're on a four-week rotation, so that's nice, so that they don't get burnout on the same thing all the time. One thing, another thing we liked about them was, uh, they don't serve any pork, which makes our diets easier because we have a lot of people that can't eat pork, so we don't have to deal with the special trays, um, and that happens more than you would think. Another thing that people don't give much thought to, but they, they call them spirit meals. They have the holiday meals and then they have some others in between, like a Super Bowl meal and some stuff like that, which really does help with our behavioral issues in the jail, to offer them something special once in a while, and they do. So we like that. I think there was like seven.
I think it says nine listed.
Nine?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's a pretty good deal. The one thing that we kind of questioned was they have a, uh, four-day supply of food?
A three-day.
Three-day supply of food. And others do like a couple of weeks, but it's not like we don't have food available in town, so. They had a quite elaborate disaster plan, um, that I didn't see in the others that could have been there. It was obvious that they had done a lot of jail stuff because of their security plan. They cover everything from key control to how to respond to taking hostages. They're just a pretty well-rounded company from what lieutenant I could find. So, uh, the impact, even though they are the cheapest, um, this year I was running with a line item of 300,000 for meals and we're just 1% under that, so had that estimated pretty close, so, and that'll go up 39,000 for next year, which that's better than 139,000, so. Anyway, that's how we came to where we are today, so.
And when would they start?
Well, um, when did the contract end with, um?
It was the first part until-
It's about 30 days from now, yeah. And how the companies transition their food, I don't know. We talked about that this morning, that I think they'll probably try to return any unopened and, uh, and I don't know what they'll do with the rest of it. Cook a meal for the commissioners and get rid of it, I guess, so.
Cookies, maybe.
Sheriff Kramer, on the spreadsheet that you gave us here, under number of cooks, they don't have anything proposed in that slot. Is that unusual or a concern for you?
Their, their proposal says that they will staff it sufficiently for efficiency. My assumption is, when it comes down, if they're chosen, they'll put a hard number on that.
Where they put in the, the wages, the three different titles and three different wages, they have the director, the lead supervisor, and the food service supervisor. That would lead me to believe that they're planning on at least three.
At least three.
And that's-
Which would be in line with the others.
Typically where we're at, anyway.
Yeah, which looks like that's what the other ones do.
We're-
We're at four, maybe.
Four now. But the thing with the four, and that's what I tried to discuss with one of the other providers, was they, they're somewhere around 6,200, 6,500 hours a year. And I don't know what difference it makes if you're dividing that by three or dividing it by four, but he, uh, he thought since we had four, that was, it was bleeding the company dry, which it's having zero impact on the company, but they're also the highest bidder, so. I, I had hoped that they would come around and, and we wouldn't have any changeover. It would just make life easier, but we're far from that, so I guess we'll be looking at something different.
Annual increases based on CPI, I see?
Yes. Yes, it's, uh... How did they work that?
They always have, um, extra besides the CPI. In their proposal, it talks an amount equal to the change in the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the CPI, all urban consumers, US city average, food away from home. But the annual price adjustments shall be based on the most current data, available 60 days prior to the contract anniversary date.
And one of the other proposals, they had, uh, they had several different things that we're going to compare to, or 5%, whichever's-
Greater. Greater. Oh, yeah, I like that.
And one of the others actually called and said, "We can probably adjust these numbers if you give us the commissary account." Well, that's not what we're talking here.
No.
You know?
Two different things.
And this is an annual contract, so we can review it again in a year and see how it's working for you.
Right. So, I don't, with that kind of difference in numbers, I don't, and with what they've put together here for what their accomplishments are and what they provide, I, I don't think there's much of a decision to be made as far as-
Very significant savings going with Trinity compared to the other three.
If they provide you what you need to have and aren't cutting too many corners, it's an obvious choice.
Well, and looking at their menus, their menus look good. I didn't have any issue with them at all.
And their spirit meals are very hefty.
Yeah.
I like the, uh, the certification that they offer for inmate workers. Anything that we can do to reduce recidivism is a good thing in my, in my book, so.
So it would be your recommendation then that we go with the option with Trinity, is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready for a motion? Mr. Chairman, I make a motion based on the recommendation from Sheriff Kramer and Lieutenant Ball that we choose Trinity Food Services for the Lincoln County Detention Center.
Second. Motion is second. Tyler, is that something that you'll be working with the sheriff in helping maybe address any concerns on a, a contract? Or do you have an agreement or something already, Sheriff, or is that something we-
We don't have anything as far as a contract, but-
Would be good to have Tyler involved, I think, on the front end of that myself, and if that's possible.
Sure. We'll contact them today and let them know that they had the winning bid.
Other questions or comments, concerns?
Depending on vote.
Roll call vote.
Uller?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Brens?
Aye.
Kugli?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Put on curtain the books today?
She's getting you trained.
She has.
Tyler, do we have need for a closed session today, did you know?
I suspect we do.
Okay.
No, no.
We don't?
Oh, I don't care for it.
Okay, um, time is here. Concerns from elected officials, department heads, or their representatives? Is there anybody that, that you're to address or concerned about?
Julie Singer, Lincoln County Assessor. As you all know, that since it's the first of June, it's our favorite time of year, it's, uh, protest time. So we just wanted, I guess, to hand out, um, you guys a little bit of information this year to let you know, uh, if you get phone calls from any constituents, this is just a little bit of information on, um, what we did and where. Charity was nice enough to type something up. It was called our reassessment actions for 2024. So I'm going to pass these out to you. And then, um, there's also another, I don't know if I put that in there or not. Something else we made up this year, and it's on the website, and we put everything out there for us too, was tips for filing, making, finding a protest faster and easier. And Becky, in their office this year, uh, they always have that, uh, blue sheet that they attach to the protest form for the referee, whether the, they want to see the referee or not, and then that tips form was also stapled with that as well this year. We're trying to get information out to the taxpayers to, to help them out as much as possible.
I appreciate that.
Yep, um, Henry has also made up, is that what the folder? The spreadsheet is, is, um, things that have sold twice within our ratio period. So you can see that, just within that two-year ratio period, what some of those sales are doing, the increase in value, because, you know, we do get that a lot from taxpayers that, um, we just raised it last year, can't have went up that much in one year's time. These are kind of some sales that show that things are, you know, selling more within a short period of time. So he went to a lot of work to kind of, um, put that out there for you guys to take a peek at. So please, if you have any questions, you know, don't be afraid to pop in or call me or my staff. Just for the fact that, um, this is the second year in a row where I'm sending out almost, well, I sent out 20,000 postcards out of 24,000, so about everybody, but some of the commercial stuff. Got an increase in valuation this year. Ag land, especially my canyon ground over Souths, took a pretty significant jump in that canyon ground.
Julie, on, on some of these, where we should see a significant increase, I'm guessing that maybe they went in, somebody bought it and rehabbed it a little bit, which is a pretty big jump, so.
And some of that, yeah, that, that could, you know, definitely be a possibility on some of that, yeah. We try to verify that when we go out and review that second sale, so if we do know that, we do make note of that in our notes and stuff, so we would be able to hopefully see that too.
I think it slowed down a little bit from last year. It seems like things-
Unfortunately, I'm, I guess I'm not sure who, is that you, Jerry? Are you the south?
Southeast.
Corner. Um, I did call several, on several sales in that area, asking if they were advertised to be sold as recreation, um, because I was suspecting maybe those, you know, canyons and cedar trees are, were getting the elk and turkey hunting, you know, being the primary reason for sales. And, uh, one particular realtor that sold two of them told me, "I would love to tell you yes, but unfortunately I have to tell you no." He said those two were specifically bought for grass and they paid 1,400 an acre. Yeah, so that was a 20, I had to do a 26% increase in the grassland in that area to come within statutory range, so, yeah. That wasn't a big one. The rest of the ag was probably kind of, um, comparable to what, you know, surrounding counties have done, you know, anywhere from maybe five to 10, or some of them maybe 12, but that grass was big.
That's an incredible amount for grass.
Yeah.
That's more like irrigated farm ground prices. Thank you so much for putting this together. It's, it's good for me to see it in comparison over a period of time like that.
You know, and if you get a lot of phone calls, you know, please encourage them to come talk to us. Let them, you know, let us, my guys, explain to them what we did and why. A lot of times they just don't understand-
Correct.
-why we have raised their value three years in a row when they have done absolutely nothing to their property. So that, that's hard to swallow, and I, and we get that. We would, we would really like them to, you know, come see us. I mean, I know they, it's, it's available online. People are busy. Sometimes they don't have the time to come in and talk, but if, if they want to, they can call even too, but.
I appreciate, appreciate the in-office offer because a lot of these residents don't really have the, um, ability to go online and review it, you know?
The elderly, you know, still have until June 30th as well to apply for homestead, so if they get phone calls, I mean, the treasures is really good when people come to pay taxes May 1st. If they think it's somebody that might qualify for homestead, they send them down to talk to us. But that's something that we could still try to get, you know, people qualified for up until June 30th as well as the homestead.
You know, over the years, that's been the number one thing that I've heard from people is if they've actually gone into your office, they've left, while, you know, nobody really likes a valuation increase, they've left understanding the process. They've, they've found actually ways in, in having conversations where that valuation has gone down a little bit. And so I applaud the work that you and your team do on a daily basis, particularly this time of year.
Thank you. Mass appraisal is tough because we, you know, they do their review and inspections externally from the outside. So when somebody comes in, brings us photos or some, you know, occasionally they want us to come and look. You know, once we know what's going on inside, then we can make adjustments sometimes, so. Yep, that's why we do, um, the earlier the better for us, you know. Towards the end, we get slammed and then it makes it harder for them to do any onsite inspections or, you know, and that kind of stuff too, but, but that is kind of the one thing we wanted to talk about. And then the second item I'm going to pass out to you is, um, Friday, we went out and did some onsite, uh, physical inspections and photos. Kent Williams met with us, or met us up there in his area on some of those, uh, properties that filed for the Betties Way Fire. They filed for the destroyed real property damage, so that's very, very similar. It's going to be treated almost like a protest form. Um, so these are some aerial, or not net, not aerial, but some photos that we took. I don't know if-
They look like the photos they took, too.
I don't know if, Henry, if you want to look through and go through. Some of them are, you know, what we've tried to take, and some of these are hard to see, but, you know, you can definitely tell the line where, uh, where it didn't burn last year. You have the brown, the taller grass, you know, that cattle won't eat. And then the line where it did burn, and you're going to be on this beautiful lush green. There are going to be some areas, it does look like possibly that, which they, the biggest percent are probably blowouts that were there previously, but there are some, some things that might look like that the, uh, they might possibly still have some blowing issues, or they could in the future. That's something, you know, we got to look for, maybe check on later. Um, we weren't able to get, time-wise kind of run out, but I know that one of the, um, I believe it was Lustrum's, the DL partnership, um, one of the things on their application that they, um, mentioned is that, uh, they had a lot of area on theirs that was disced ahead of the fire. So we were not able to see, I don't believe any of these photos or any of the property we saw had any disced ground. So now whether that is as green and lush as this other stuff, we're not sure. Um, we kind of talked, I think, maybe Kent wants to even speak to it too. He talked to Brandon a little bit.
Yeah, we did a little brainstorming about, because, and thank, I have a nice color-coded map I can share with the board.
And I think maybe we made those copies with-
Did you get one?
Yes, yeah.
I actually put this together.
Angie did, yeah.
Or Angie, I'm sorry, but you can see there's 27 different parcels, I think, and six landowners involved that took that approach, but so part of the discussion that Julie wanted to bring forth was, you know, wildfires are nothing new and it's really maybe out of the realm of adjustments on tax value, particularly when it heals up, as this is, thankfully is, appears to be. The parcels that we viewed, and not specifically any of these parcels, but all, two of them for sure, we, we had visuals on. But the front page picture you see with the old hills and the cedars on the front, that's at, um, just south of the corner of, uh, Keywood and, uh, North Maxwell.
Maxwell, really, yeah.
So that'll show you the old growth, total burn growth that didn't, you know, didn't catch fire in the trees that were damaged around the area. And that's, it's kind of the sketchy burn pattern that, you know, you can see on the perimeter, not necessarily always on the perimeter of a fire event. Nonetheless, uh, it was encouraging to see that, you know, we have been blessed with good moisture this spring. And, and there is a program, and I, I don't have any inclination or knowledge of the compensation value, but Julie pointed out, or maybe Henry, uh, when we were brainstorming evaluations of this, that Farm Service or one of the- that Farm Service or one of the divisions of Farm Service has a resting program, for the lack of a better description.
No, I talked to her this morning, and with the CRP thing, that was up until the nesting season started, so that's over.
That's a different thing.
Yeah, and she told me this morning it's more on a case-to-case basis, so she couldn't give me a value.
Oh, I see. They don't have, they don't have an.
A dollar value, no.
I got you.
Could we find some late nesters?
That's possible.
The way the statute reads on this report of destroyed real property, as far as making adjustments to valuation is, it is supposed to be, affect the value greater than a 20% difference in the, you know, the current value to what it is after the damage. Structures would be very, very easy to determine those, and we do have, the people that lost structures, we do have their applications. But it does state in there as well that you cannot figure in any crop loss. So this is where, you know, the grass is tough. If the cornfield burns, we can't do anything about it. It didn't affect, you know, the ground, it's still going to sell as irrigated ground, you know, the crop lost this year. The grass, we do prescribe burns all the time, that's where we was kind of discussing with Kent. You know, this is going to be tough to make adjustments on the grass. Because was the ground itself really damaged? Is the grass considered the crop that's on that ground? When we had the flooding, you know, years ago, like especially back east, when they had the six-foot washes and people had 10-foot piles of sand or silt in their fields that they didn't have before. You know, definitely that, that was damage to the, to the ground itself, and adjustments were made. But this is one of the ones that's tough. We would like to get eyes on some of that disced ground, because it, it could be blowing, you know. And they have affected it totally different than this, but.
And I'm glad you, you know, I'm glad you were proactive in this, because in my view, we've got several auctions with drones that are, belong to different agencies that we have control over. And this early in the process where you've got parcels in question, if we could get some drone footage so that at tax time, or whenever we review these, start to review these, we've got some credible.
The decisions on these have to be made, I think, by July 25th, the same like a regular protest. They actually have up until July 15th to file on any damage that occurred up until July 1st. So anything, I mean, we could have damage coming in this next month, you know, if something happens, a tornado or, or something like that, you know, that we lost some, which I think we did last night, we lost some pivots. Unfortunately, that's not anything we can make adjustments on the real estate value. But, but anything that happens up until July 1st, they have until July 15th. And then the board has to make a determination of value by July 25th.
Julie, is there any adjustment, folks have had to replace fencing? Would fencing be considered a part of the land?
We don't put a value on fencing, you know, windmills, stock tanks, you know, we don't have values. They may turn some of that in as their personal property, on their personal property schedule once in a while. You know, a pump or, you know, a tank or something might get turned in there. But as far as on their real estate, we don't put a value on their barbed wire fencing and their pasture ground. The NRCS did have a program.
That's where the FSA is kicking in, she told me this morning.
At the Betty Way fire.
With the helping on the fencing.
I think that was first come, first served, so I don't know if they still have stuff available there or not, I don't know.
Yeah, the NCRS, that was first come, she said that, sounds like that's gone.
That's a key piece.
But the FSA still has funds available to help with fencing.
That's a key piece of education, I think, for a lot of people throughout the county, is there is no value that's put on fencing. Or on stock tanks and windmills, so.
It's just a little, it's not considered a part of the property.
And she is going to get, send some links to me, she hasn't gotten sent yet.
Okay.
But that'll, where they can go for help.
Well, I know the North, I also tours there, too, later after we met Brady to Garfield. And of course, you can see the fire line up through there as well. And again, thankfully, since we've got good rains, the rain's land that was affected there is coming back in good shape now. Having been in the cattle business my entire life, I understand that you can't always tax that land at the same rate for animal units. I get all that, but it's, the positive part is at least we're getting rains, and those grasses are coming back, and they look very healthy at this point. Knock on wood, we can share prayers and keep getting rains. That's the biggest thing, it's helping recover those.
If we're able to get some good new drone footage, can you use your GIS satellite images to compare on some of these blowouts? To see if they were already existing, or if they were caused by the?
We have, 2022 is our most current, so it's fairly current. I believe they're going to, well, I guess they're going to do any good, be too late. They're going to fly again, I think this, I don't know if they did spring. We don't have the 2024 imagery yet, so we'd have to find out if that's before or after. But, yeah, we would have 2022 imagery we could compare to, yes. You can definitely see, like, the golf course, you know, where they have dug their sand and stuff, the difference between.
Right, and on some of the pictures, those don't look like new blowouts, but in some areas, it does look like maybe.
It could be, we could double-check some of that.
Disking or tractors, you know, that'd be a great comparison to have.
So I guess it, you know, might kind of continue to work with Kent to try to get some drone stuff, I mean.
Well, I, yeah, I think we, it was pointed out this morning earlier that we also have, we have, emergency management has a drone. Noxious weed has a pretty sophisticated drone.
Well, great.
And I know from just city, being around a third party's drone, which I'm sure is not as sophisticated as those probably are, that you can literally plug that thing in and say, I want to fly here, 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 and come back to me. And just watch it on the camera and wait for it to come back, and then download the data to your laptop, and you've got. So you could identify parcels, we could maybe coordinate with Noxious Weed or with Brandon or both.
Right.
And identify some of these parcels that have filed.
Angie in my office did do the color coding on, on that map for you guys when we filed. But the map itself was provided kindly enough by Bruce Sokol from the FSA, had those maps, aerial.
So because those parcels are identified, you know, you could dial them in and fly them, and then we could review the flight data.
I may try to have you help me work that out, because I just don't know how busy we're, you know, my guys will be this next.
Really all we need would be, I guess, approach Todd.
Yes, I can.
The weed works.
Just, yeah.
Yep, I'll take care of it. Talking to Todd out at Weed's.
And like I said, I got more maps here and stuff, anything he needs from us.
Okay.
I'll ask Brandon if he could contribute some time and split them up.
Perfect.
And I saw, I give him the legals, it's a simple matter of going out and flying the footage and identifying which parcel we're on and downloading it.
I agree.
Okay, just wanted to keep you guys in the loop on where we're kind of at there, too.
Julie, thank you for bringing in your great team. Henry, Charity, Ashley, thank you guys for all the work you've done.
And like I said, please, don't hesitate to call any of us if you have questions on any.
We'll see you seven July, huh?
Good morning, Mr. Boyer.
Good morning, guys. Did it big rain last night? It was a really nice rain after the wind went down.
Can't hear the generators kicked on nicely?
Well, that's why I'm here today, to give you guys a report on how that went.
Did you expect to get a chance to use that multiple times already?
Well, no, it's been kind of interesting. So Tuesday after tomorrow, the weekend on the install, 7 o'clock in the morning, lost power. Kicked on like it should before you even did the testing, NNC could even get out to do the testing. Kicked on, ran like it should. Then again, last night, we haven't had, it's worked flawlessly so far. Has a 650-gallon tank, and it's still at 100% fuel level. And it probably ran, I'm guessing, probably four or five hours last night. The really neat thing about this generator, because a lot of you guys have been in the, while the generators ran at the jail, how loud that is. This generator with its cover is insulated, it is quiet. Like, when it kicked on, I was like, really? This is it, like, and I talked to NNC about it, like, well, how much load can it carry? He goes, look, we could set there and put three more buildings on this, and it'd be just fine on what it's drawing right now, running. It's been great. I haven't had one complaint about it, it's functionally brilliant. For you guys do know, there is something. The secondary natural gas generator on the roof. What happens is the main one kicks on, the second one is backup. And once that second one notices that we got a steady flow of power coming in the building, it won't kick on. So it's just secondary backup for the IT. It doesn't control any of the lights, but it will control all your computers.
Well, that's, that should be the intent of.
And it's working perfectly.
I think it controls our emergency lighting computers, those things like that.
But it, it worked flawlessly on how they got it set up.
Very nice.
Did Cat tell you what the consumption an hour would be on that unit?
Well, he said it could run, pulling full load 48 hours straight, that fuel.
How big's the fuel tank?
650 gallons. So, I mean, that's pretty good, pretty good haul.
That's a big power unit, I looked, Jerry and I looked at it last week, that's a huge power unit.
We could probably power all of downtown if we needed to with a.
You know, I was super impressed with the guy from NNC. He is like, I know that's his job, but he knows every in and out, very intelligent guy. And he's like, call me anytime, you run into something, like, it was a good company to work with, I can give him that.
It's about, what, 12 gallon an hour?
Yep, which is pretty efficient, really.
For as big as it is.
Yeah.
If it were on my pivot, I wouldn't like it at all.
Probably not.
I happened to be in town the morning after their original install, when they lost power downtown. And I drove by with my window down and questioned whether it was running or not. It is quiet.
It's super quiet.
Very quiet for as big as it is.
PD drove by yesterday and also did the same thing, and reported it's running, but they had to really stop and make sure that it was running, and reported back up to the center, so they also noticed that.
Last night, it was kind of a funny night, because I talked to Brandon Meyer, and I talked to a couple of my staff. A couple of my staff came down to make sure it was running, Brandon said the PD went by and it was running. I was a little worried, because I got a phone call from Brian over at the jail. He kept calling, went through dispatch, other than straight from the jail, the line he was using. So I'm, I was a little nervous, something bad went wrong, but everything worked like it should, so.
I was actually here working on my computer when that happened, and I was like, oh. But, yeah, it did not take very long, and it just, I mean, it was pretty hard. I mean, when it came on, it was a pretty, you know, all came on.
You could hear it bang.
But, I mean, I didn't really go on my computer, I didn't.
I'll be honest with you.
Honestly, when I left, two, three hours later, like, oh my gosh, the whole town's out. I mean, I just, because I was in the jail, oh, so I couldn't really see.
I'll be honest with you, I was wrong, and I, I'll admit it, because I'm sitting, in the back of my mind, I was like, you know, we had power go out here before, I don't know. This is a game chaser, it's a great thing, I'm glad we did it. This is the, the key point of our community in this county is this courthouse, so I'm glad it's up and running. And disaster does happen, we can keep functioning. But that's what I have for you guys.
Speaking of that, I would like, if we can, maybe to go out, take a look at, you know, we talked about a little bit fence height around that and stuff, and I think it'd be nice for Booker, if we could have some cohesitives around the border as to what we're doing. I know that Booker had shown me some, I think you had some dog ears.
Yep.
My comment would be that, I think personally, would be nice if we just had, like, you know, when you have a vinyl or plastic fence, it has the straight edge rather than a dog ear, because it's not really characteristic of the neighborhood. But, you know, just a clean band around the top, you know, square band. Maybe some kind of a lighter color, you know, a buff to match the brick or something, so that doesn't stand out from the building. Other than that, I know, I think you've done a tremendous job out there. Booker really appreciate it, appreciates your planning, and I think you might even have some tape up there for us to do some comparison, do you?
Yes, we do.
Should we just take a, a quick, we won't really recess, well, wouldn't we recess? No, we're, we're still, oh, maybe we have to recess, we will, we'll recess, come back in here, because it's on TV. I'd like to take a, a brief recess, just to take a look at the wall if we can.
Recession, then you're all still together. You're just picking up the meeting moving.
Go for it.
Okay.
Okay, let's do that.
Can we take the shortcut door, or are we going to have a problem?
You have to ask the boss, can we? Okay, thank you, Tyler.
I said yes.
I like the way you're thinking.
Thank you, Tyler.
We're just going to take a walk out to the generators and come back.
It was pitch black in here, I'll tell you that.
I bet it was.
I was back in the vault, it was like, I mean, it took me a minute, but I mean, it did not take long for it to pop back on. But I knew we lost our home, but I just kept looking, and my lust is like, the farther I drove, it was like, it's everywhere.
That was weird, seeing no lights, nothing, you were flat.
Yeah, no lights.
It was still powered down in that corner. Both folks lost some power.
Yeah, that's because everybody was, they're eating. They were all kind of there to eat.
Yeah, it's crazy, I drove out there, too, it was like, oh, Lord, no.
We were just coming back from Black Hills, got to the flat. Other than like this little corner, bunch of buildings.
It was right, right where that kind of tornado went through, too. Over there, it was crazy.
Clearly, they all had their own substation.
Yeah. If I generate some of this.
Yeah, you could definitely tell you had generators. Some of the stoplights worked, and some didn't, or a few did. There's some key ones that are working, and some key ones aren't.
They have been.
I tried that, but it just, they weren't.
All the damage.
At a certain point.
Yeah, it did.
Because once the clouds had passed.
It's the airlocks, it'll do some stuff, and we're all looking at the window, it's very exciting, it was just a black hole. It went right in front of my neighbors. And I'm like, are we on a tornado? We might be doing something, because it was black. And then you look at that tornado that was there, and it was just black. It's crazy. If we would have been home, I think we could have seen it, just, yeah. It was crazy.
You looked at the window, it was dark, and you can't hear anything, you're even that high, I mean, I couldn't hear anything. That's why I was so shocked when I left, I was like, hey, that really was windy.
It's a 97 mile an hour.
That one was, I mean, the more you breathe, but then the rain stopped, whatever, there was no, like.
Nine one one went out.
Oh, that's what happened, I'm like, you know, it was really, maybe thinking, we really truly have an emergency, we are not prepared.
No, no, it's like.
I was so hungry, I was so.
The lessons.
Don't open the refrigerator.
Oh, yeah, I had opened your microwave.
Yeah, so I was just eating.
That's because it's like, it was filled.
Yeah. I was eating a cobhorn.
I just, I keep happening.
I was hoping I'd open your microwave.
I was happy to sign off. I was good, I was okay.
And I was like, oh.
It was white, but that one up. It wasn't, I didn't need to open it.
That's good. Yeah, I have cooked all of my chicken because I have made a, a little gravy pasta. Is she making this good? Uh, this cup I got at Etsy, it's from a book series that my friend and I both love, so she got it for me. But. I do love this. Except this one, I don't know if it's silver, I think it's like something, I just like having a coffee cup. I just like having a coffee cup. I just like, just let it stay with me. So try not to use, try not to use that one. Yeah. The book references this here. Yeah. But as we can joke, it's in the character of years, so it's kind of shaky, I think, because I have to drop stuff on my son. So that's why it's a tea. Yeah. All I can do is read, I can get a couple of words. And you know what kind of, I still, I mean, there's some recommendations, I don't want to.
Pretty dog unlucky, we've hit the spring, we've hit that grass up there.
Oh, yeah. I was really amazed how it looked, really how it's come back.
One thing that helped a lot is that it was so fast, you know.
Yeah.
It was. Yet there is, it has more grass, you know, where it's had, it's had, burned, get a little hot, you know, just didn't have that.
Over on Wild Wurst, it was a little less impactful because you had all those pivots in open fields and that kind of chopped it up a little bit and helped. But you get past Monson's Ranch, it was pretty intense on there, from there almost to the Garfield.
Yeah.
Well, we have been blessed with good rain, that's for sure.
So I did come from all of this and I was, this was very, very, most of our year.
I have Michaela talk to you guys after the meeting. I've got another thing I need to take care of, so.
Okay. I don't know what artists. I know, like I heard a lot about this story, it was very inspirational. And person, and here's a lot of this, this, that you have touches on. I was just bad because we didn't realize this was going to happen at that point and we had a different reservation, could have done it any part. So we ended up just giving it to Chinese.
I have one that I want to ask Chris.
It's me, Val.
I'm glad it's number 42, right?
Yes, it is. Is that what you're saying? You do a great job keeping track.
I can see it in the paper.
Sure, we're checking.
Thanks, Booker. Yeah, they actually.
Oh, squirt away, buddy.
Yep, we're good.
Thanks.
They were only 80%. Good, good. Because I've been thinking about them.
I know. You'll see what I've put on your desk. We need to get in there.
Thanks, Booker.
Yeah, thank you.
That's the last one.
Those talks, drones, are capable of just dialing in coordinates and flying it?
I believe so.
Do you have a committee report they would wish to?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Visitors Bureau met this last week, and the main item that this board needs to be aware of is that two of the board members are terming off, term elements off, and they will be taking, and they're taking applications for consideration that I believe we decided at our July meeting on filling those two empty spots. One of them needs to be a hotel employee.
Needs to be what?
A hotel employee.
Okay, gotcha. The other, the other one public, Ken?
Yes.
I have, I was invited to a meeting with NDOT, and it was the kickoff meeting for the Newberry Expansion project. They have prioritized it, they're in, going into design phase, engineers are working on that. They plan on bidding the project in 2028, construction in 2029, so wanted to share that information with the board.
Thank you.
Far ahead of schedule.
Yes.
Forty years in the making.
That seems to be our magic number, doesn't it? I had my Sandhills RC&amp;D meeting. I had volunteered to do their annual audit for their bank accounts, and I'm happy to report it was one of the easier audits I've ever been in charge of. Twyla does a fantastic job of running the office, all the different agencies that she manages. So their annual report reconciled, balanced to the penny, and it's nice to have that behind us and we can move on to focusing on all of the other projects that we do.
I didn't see in the room.
What's that?
I didn't see in the room.
Were you in the room?
Yeah.
And it's on the phone.
I drove to try it.
I didn't hear you when they called rocom, but.
You didn't get on until we were 20 minutes into the meeting.
Yeah, I was out in the canyons, dropping, dropping.
So you wanted to hear from rocom. I got to see the inside of the courthouse.
Very good.